College meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Public input. Stand on the move out of the studio for the senior council. Come here, boxes of 45.
I'm sure I have any others.
There's times in terms.
I was just taking another one.
We'll watch you.
Orange.
Make some more.
Where is that? And the 15th is what's called the Codulation Day. For senior final academic centers. What they. For us fine arts, the authorities that did it is called boxing. They're the cultural group community and as part of it. They want restoration and best execution of the art. Then of course, we're there in Thursday. They have a concert next Tuesday. So I would like to tell them that. For our little athletic providers, boy and girl track team on Tuesday. There was a softball meeting today. Supo, the last year nine four last week. Can be told one thing seven against. Our the Europe trip I did during April break. And April break also. And the junior class reality there was today. Which is teaching financial literacy to students. And for my student report, I have an anti-bigly arm that I made.
Yeah, can't see that.
Yeah. It's just better wraps kind of.
That could be a recipe for this case.
Yeah, yeah, it could be. And then this is my image source. And basically what we had to do was in a help I'd be examined, it has a problem to play there was about six, eight sources and synthesize an argument. And right, that's all our exam essays. This product is called our own topic at the 20th. And for mine, I did Hawaii, tourism Hawaii. And we did evaluate qualified that except with tourism to be allowed or limited with economic, social and environmental consequences. And I expect we all have your answer. This anti-bigly arm is basically part of that. We need to evaluate our services and then plan and buy issue one.
Good. Time for questions. I have three. First one you're gonna know is how did you think of the reality there because you are a junior? Curious for your thoughts.
I liked it. I thought it was useful. It was more interesting. But yeah, I was, it was fun. And I thought it was really good. I don't know. I was trying to go.
And just basically for people, the new services that was involved in it, new services that comes in for the juniors and they give everybody, they get to pick a job that they want to do and they get their first year salary. And there's different community members that come in and off duty at their time and they have different tables. So then you get your salary, you have to take out your taxes and then you have to do a budget. So they go around and talk to people about housing cost and you know, auto cost and all the various things to try to balance a budget. And again, there's some kids that I think actually did it pretty well, but other kids are really struggled for that. It's a good, it's a good lesson for some people like, oh, I'm gonna do all these things. And they're like, oh, I don't have the money to do all these things. So I heard a lot of like, I didn't know things cost that much. And so it's a good thing. And actually, Mrs. Caulfield told me that they're actually incorporating something like that into one of the senior act classes for this year and this year as well.
Yeah, we did. We had the financial literacy program last two years. So we came to all, we actually done less financial lessons in the real plan. And then we tried to do some additional activity to be able to do.
One announcement I would just add, the middle school one act plays and next Friday, I will do like that one. And then I will embarrass you as always, but if any student wins a national award, we would recognize them. So if you speak of, I know that you were, were the national high school science data awards.
Yeah, I think it's.
Data science.
Yeah, so that was an AI, digital science function. And then I applied for me and I got very good.
Awesome.
Also recognized for your poetry as well. So great, great achievements on both sides of the earth.
Don't want to embarrass you, but really the blue column, winning a national competition. Amazing, congratulations. Hi. Comments? Thank you very much. Okay. And as I wish you wanted to, you don't want to, but we're at the Hood School today, so I don't know. Turning over to Dr. McCann or Daly. One of the doctors can introduce us.
Excellent. Well, thank you everyone for coming to the Hood School School Committee presentation. I'm glad we can bring this all here from Hood School. You're 17, which is pretty fun. Enjoyed it. So tonight, we just hope to showcase more of like family and community engagement as our working theme for the night. So I invite as a principal, I want to share some interesting information and just walking through the agenda. Doctor Dunn. So we're here for my J turn of Hood School Council about one of their projects, the Lazarus House, what they do, some of their other things. We'll talk about the Hood School Playground project and then we'll be serenaded out to some of California schools and faculty open that hood. So our Hood School chorus will be singing us out the door. So I hope you enjoy it. Here at the Hood School, we always say that hand in hand together we can as our working theme. We believe that we can accomplish any goal if we work together collaboratively with various stakeholders groups, activities, school administration, parents, families, students. And you know, just to achieve any goal that we want to see that this year was a huge year for that class. I'd like to start off introducing Mrs. Clary and Mrs. Sherman, say thank you to them publicly for all the work that they do. This place is a busy little place. Yep. And certainly their efforts behind the scenes, this amazing group, our student council. And we appreciate that in a positive way. So.
So the JT Hood School, we could collaborate, collaborate with the Lazarus House to. They like made bags for people that are.
We should hand hand the North Reading High School student council, the Dallas Park, the North Reading. The Hood School, the Hood School, the third student council, the North Reading High School student council, Saturday, Georgia, Texas, five X, the streets. The sign, the two cars, the face walks from side to side, gun, means, bro, it's love. We've gotten enough items to build a big, bad, to left, to left, to left. Can't have children. These are all the supplies that we're going to use for that and we believe. In regard to head movement, first grade head, child, five, dance, and Tyler, attitude. Second grade head, child, five, English. Our day of two projects, two things are, fourth day had championship. They had talent. Our school had Walter and that had to rush. The latter knows. The Lazarus House is a bridge that provides every person with homes and the food necessary to survive. They also provide shelter for the person who needs it. This program started in 19 through usual faithful volunteers wanting to help through the community to start up. Still helps people to understand. So just pictures of them had all the bags together, all the bags in the boxes. There are a lot of boxes and stuff. All stacked up on the sale. So this is on the other side of the chat. This is the part of the series having songs named love. And this is the one that I would like to use for online.
So I just want to take a minute, just recognize this group, the accomplishments this year have been amazing. I truly enjoyed watching the leadership role that you've taken with the other students and just the pure joy that you've had through all of these different activities that you've had. And I really, I want to say the hustle and bustle they create around this school is just, it's been great. You took little fundraisers and they're standing at the door with their shirts on, big smile on their faces and just engaging with the younger students. I loved how when you did that last fundraiser, you brought in and targeted at grade levels, written a specific item. I just thought it was a great idea. And I love the fact that you continued your work with the Lazarus House. So thank you. Did a great job. Any questions?
Yeah, just a private question. So it was 300 bags. Did the Lazarus House suggest that number? But that's just what you raised a question, donation.
We went.
It's great. And did you hear, did you ever hear from them on the impact that it had or not?
Yes, they sent a letter.
That's great.
A letter that was sent and you ended up with it's journals, it's clear. The letter was super heartfelt and described the impact that those, those bags have on the families that they've given to you. So it was, it was a nice letter, but it was, it was deep meaning and it felt really good to read as a school year. So I appreciated that.
Thank you, Dr. McCann. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the Hood School Playground project. Has everybody heard about this? The buzz of the town. I've been accused of changing the skyline in Look Ready. So it's been a joy to, to, to watch this take off. So I'll just talk about the process that we went through, where we're at now and some next steps. So we really looked at this as a need for the school on its way as to why. And then a really way to engage families. So I just, one of the missions that we have is always in family engagement, shared responsibility, which contributes to the healthy development of our students and the growth of our children. And ways, ways to build relationships amongst all stakeholders. So this certainly has exemplified that in my opinion. It's been great. There was a lot of weekends, there was a lot of families here, there was a lot of kids here. And it just brought joy to everyone. So it's just been a real special moment to watch the engagement of the group. So just some, for context, we had our before on the far left. It was done prior to my arrival. It, it, it certain purpose, it was that there was some area around it that was not so good. There was a lot of ledge, a lot of cliffs. So there was some pretty extensive excavation work done.
Not ideal when you're close on the playground.
It was bad. There was, there was some blast in there. There was, we would do all the morning and we like clean it up and it needed some help. So we don't have that problem anymore. So as you can see in the middle, a lot of volunteers helping out and then our final project. I know that's not a great picture, but it gets our turf field and our play structure in the background. So how did this partnership begin? We attend PA meetings, we go and they simply said, what does the list really mean? I said, we've got a better job, smart boards, technology and all of those stuff. The area that our students need the most is that outside play area. So it started with the structure and then kind of went out from there. And the PA was right on board, ready to help. This is what our kids need, we're doing this. Great. Mr. Quinlan, I think, came to a couple PA meetings with me and we talked at length about ideas, a lot of email exchanges. So definitely a very collaborative process. And then as time goes, we landed right on time. As you can see in the picture on the right, I think Michael Conley got a friend to email from me. Right before school was opening.
Because there was August.
A parent, a parent came to the playground and sent us pictures of the broken slide. So it was time to close that up and then we had it taken home shortly after, but it was definitely timely. So like I said, our Parents Association jumped right on board. This is a picture of all the students of our Parents Association. They were just integral, they were super supportive. I will say that every one of them was just able to communicate, support, always there. Everybody had their own little area of expertise and was able to jump in. Jen Furden, the leader, the president of the PA was able to take a really strong leadership role and coordinate downward. And yeah, I think the communications, everybody was treasurer on drop the dime, would literally be in touch with us and we really appreciated that.
The treasurer walks up and down Main Street with his, with his sponsorship flyers and kind of knocking on all the, all the businesses and trying to stir up some more support for our, for our playground.
And, and there was times when that scenario happened and somebody said, yeah, come back. Oh, he came back. He came back again. And then he'd tell us that he went back. It was, so Tommy Fiorentino certainly put in a lot of steps on his track earlier that day, just going up and down 28. So we appreciated it. Simultaneously too, kind of this, we had started a new fund run for the Hood School and we wanted to target fundraisers. So Meg Warkowski runs our fund run, did a wonderful job. And our fund run, have we done two years or three years of a fund run to raise the funds?
Three.
So we finished our third year this year and the third year paid for turf field portion of the playground.
Were you the first one to do the fund run? Uh, I think that, I think that the batch was the first.
I'm not sure. I know that there's a school in Litfield where one of the parents shares family, some of them, that's where they got the idea, but I don't know if we were truly first or.
The batch that they're here for.
Yeah.
So we enlisted some volunteers, we started getting people out. And that's, so thank you, Mr. Quinlan for, he was a text message away from. So when we're doing a project like this, things would happen pretty quick and we would need somebody to communicate. So the PA communications would post something and Matt would text some parent group and all sorts of people would show up with shovels and wheelbarrows and.
Mr. Carroll. He was, hey, who in your neighborhood can come tomorrow morning? And he showed up.
Yep. And many of the neighbors showed up. It was so much fun and I would show up, I would do my best and mostly coffee or pizza. Yep. There's somebody's gotta do it. We enjoyed it. So, so thank you, Mr. Quinlan, for kind of coordinating that aspect of it. I think Ryan Carroll has to have a big shout out, shout out on all this. That's him in the middle and that's him with one of his daughters. He has Ainsley, Finley, Morgan and Delaney, who is now in middle school, four girls here at the Hood School. How would you describe it, more of like a general.
He's the project manager and he, I've never, the detail in every email and the amount of time he put into, like my brain doesn't work that way. And so having him be the contact between the PTO and then the, sorry, my kid's school is the PTO, it's the PTA here. It's something different anyways. And then between the playground distributor, everybody, he was on top finding the dates, he, all the contractors that connected through. It was, it was a lot of work on his part.
Yeah. And he, he, he crushed it. So he did a million jobs, so we super appreciate, appreciate of him. And just again, many hands make light work. As you can just see through all the pictures, there's multiple events happening, there's mulch spreading events, there's actually days when parents were showing up, there was a truck and parents were carrying all of the items out and then installing them. Then all of a sudden I looked up and there was like five parents up on the top and it was done. So it was super exciting to see. There were just volunteers everywhere. So we have a playground sponsor list. Mr. Quinlan. Everybody knows Mr. Quinlan, right? Hood School Wellness PD Teacher. So I would just mention our diamond sponsors with the J turn of the Parents Association, Cavalieri Construction in Benevento. We had the Zanetti family, the House family. The House Corporation and Scott and Nicole Bartley. Thank you. And V and G Ironworks as a platinum donor.
For gold donors, we had China Cuisine, Colin and Jonah Christie students here, Cummings Properties, Fit Revolution, Fiorentino family, Independent Concrete Pumping, Lemain Insurance Agency. Kids are not here yet, but they will be soon. Mike DiSassio, excavation contractor is a former student. PDA Dental Group, Silver Sponsor Level. We have Christopher's Market, Earthstone and Water, the Fitzpatrick family, Flush Incorporated, Franklin and Lola Chang students here, Hood School 2024 fifth graders, JJ James, Juliana and Joey Burnham, the Keane family, Kitty's Ludwig family, Main Street Barbershop, Michael and Nathan Arena, the Mila Bonova family, the Moran family, Nick's Place, Reading Lumber, the Roden family and Salem Five.
And we appreciated all their donations, all their support. It was, like I said, it was just for being the principal of the school, just to see so many people step up and help in any way they could was just great to step back and take a look at what you're like. So thank you to all of those sponsors. The Cavalieri family, just want to talk a little bit about how that happened. So the parents, it's Jimmy, James and Diana, they have a baby Charlotte who. And then it's Cameron and Chase who are both students here. That's them up there on top of the play structure. So we all have favorite moments in time during events. So, so this Chase, he is operating the, he's packing the sand. That was just fun to watch it grow that his father was not happy with him in that moment, but I was able to snap a picture of him doing some of the excavation work. So that's great. Yeah, the Cavalieri family was just amazing to, it was amazing to see somebody work with such passion. Jimmy claimed that he got hooked early on. He got in deep and started, just always talking about doing it for the kids and doing it for the kids. I mean, he was here on Sunday mornings.
He was here for like at least five weekends in a row. It's like straight, not totally.
There was a time that I was going to see my nephews at Litfield play lacrosse tournament against North Reading. I came here, I left to go see that and he stayed and his son was actually playing the game. So like the level of dedication that even that moment in time, he was all in, always talking about the kids, how to help the school. So I just really appreciated that. They're just an amazing family. So we have them for a lot more time around, around the school. So we're super happy. And I mentioned Benevento, they have Benevento companies there because Mr. Cavalieri was able to connect us with them for their donation as well. And they just, we needed the material, he was here like an hour. So just amazing family and amazing company to work with and super appreciative of them. But I, I just loved his passion and his level of dedication around this part of the project.
I think one of the things you pointed out was all the legend clips that were there when they built the other playground. And just the resources they had at the time allowed him to do the playground area and that was it. He was able, that's all we were thinking, we were going to be able to do. And all of a sudden, the entire landscape was, was reconfigured, began for space, I don't know how many car sized pieces of ledger on. So.
So just some pictures going through with the playground. So we had a soft opening, still in the soft opening phase. There's a big announcement at the end of this presentation about our next steps. But there's a big debate in the Carroll family. So this is two of the girls right here. Which one was the first one to go on the slide? So Morgan told me today that it was Ainsley was the first one, but then I asked Ainsley if she was the first one to use the slide and she just didn't know it was for her. So I guess we'll never know who the first one to use the play structure was, but definitely good to snap that picture and see their smiling faces. Dana Lewis at the middle school, they were putting together a little video of our students using it.
Finally, you can see my boss playing on our new living structure. It has been so much fun to see this structure be accessible to our littlest learners, all the way up to watching the creators have glanced on it. It's maybe world is different, everything is fun for them to explore and adventure and really push the limits of what their model skills are.
My biggest animal in the new playground is that the big slide is really fun to go down.
I like the big slide because when I see the second graders and the cheerleaders go down it, I always like screaming, having fun. I really like that.
All the different levels of the play structure allow all the kids to be out here at once, doing things that excite them, getting their sillies out and just having a lot of fun with their friends.
The new structure is definitely way better. The older structure, it wasn't small and it's all planned the way it's trying to go, but it's a bigger now and it's easy to walk through.
The turns fun, a great place for them to get to play football and frisbee and just run around and tag with their friends.
The turf feels soft, the turf is safe and padded, so we can do gymnastics.
We have two grades up here at the time for recess every day and having the group spaces, the play structure and the mulch, everyone has plenty of space. It's definitely less invested than it was before. The little bit of space that's added makes a world of difference.
It has like more space and more levels so people can do things for people to do. This one was a little bigger and it has the hood school colors.
The mulch base has been great and we cannot wait for the newest addition of swings, which is coming soon. We can't wait for them to just have another thing to have on that recess.
There you go. Oh, you got that sign too fast. So the big announcement is our official grand opening will be on June 4th here on the Hood School Playground at 6:00 PM. That's where we'll do all the official ribbon cutting and recognitions and all that. So expecting an invitation from our Parents Association for that. And looking forward to it. A special thank you to, so our business manager was amazing helping me through this process. As you can imagine, there's a lot of intricacies related to that. So there are times when I would say, Matt, tell Ryan to hold on, I have to call Michael to get information. So and then also that sunny companion was amazing to, he'd come in and kind of say, did you look at it this way? Did you see this? How about this? So his feedback was tremendous throughout the process. I mean, I'm okay with some stuff, but this was definitely outside of the principal's skill set. So I had a lot of great people to lean on. So, so I'll just say thank you to them. And open up to any questions.
I was just gonna, so the, the, where the C email with the photos came this fall, this past fall?
Yeah, this summer at some point, whether it's July or August is before school started.
So the whole process has been just only 10 months.
So we, we started in the spring, thinking this would be a great thing to do over the next couple of years and think like fundraising would take quite some time, but I think the sponsors and the fund run and everything expedited this. I think a lot sooner than they have started this, if it was possible.
I think a lot of people bought behind it quickly and were able to rally behind it and just like I said, Mr. Cavalieri, like the passion and commitment and just like, I can carry that phrase, let's do it for the kids, let's do it for the kids. And then one thing would happen and all, there was one day when the structure first went up and they couldn't use it And then one thing would happen and all, there was one day when the structure first went up and they couldn't use it. And we couldn't exit the building. Well, aside this way, they had to go out the door over here. And this is this one video of them, like they saw it go up and just the way the kids' faces lit up. You could see the parents and the volunteers all so simultaneously catching on to that and just rallying behind it. So we're able to accomplish so much in such a short period of time due to the level of dedication of everybody involved. It was amazing to watch.
I took that video from the top of the lift, up at the top of the new skyline. And it was so cool because the kids had no vision point running behind the gym. And then as soon as they turned, it was like shock and awe, and it was great.
Two comments first. I think it's wonderful that the community stepped up to donate funds. I mean, I kind of wish that we didn't have to P T Os, you know, contribute to the playground. I think that's an integral part of education, going outside and playing playgrounds. But it's wonderful that the community has stepped up. We need a, I guess the only other question is, do you guys want to have kids follow up?
Our project manager was asked to consult on it, to be honest with you. And I don't know where he left that. He did mention that he was asked to be a consultant. So I'm not sure where he is at ever. You know, we lend a hand, but I think we still, we still have some steps out here. I mean, there's definitely some next steps for us. A swing set was delivered last week. So that has to get put in still. We're still talking about some.
Rebuilding the patio, we took the patio. We saved all the sponsored bricks from the past to put in the walkway, but we still have a lot of papers left. So talking about picnic tables that match the school colors and all that fun stuff on the new patio. And there's a couple of other elements that, you know, depending on what the future grades and whatnot, could continue to grow that that space.
So our next big step though will be the installation of the swings. Trying to figure out where everything else lands.
I would just, I think, many thanks to the community, but also many thanks to the extra hours put in by you two and whoever else was a volunteer, the staff. It's a huge project and to get it done so quickly and so well.
It was fun.
We did well, but we, I think we really enjoyed it. I mean, it was like good times to see people. It's just nice to see such dedication. I mean, I caught it a little bit and I would just come here and be like, oh my goodness, like all these people are here like doing all these amazing things. Literally, big wheel house, a mulch going, like four-hour shifts. It was, it was good. If you ask for something, I'll say that I can.
Just want to echo with my comments and to thank everyone. Carols, Cavalieries, everyone that helped out. Dr. McKay, the leadership on this, like we've been walking these grounds for many years when we come to visit. He's had ideas about, we can build something here, we can build something here. I don't think it all came together and then started to see the vision. You've been so excited about this project. Every time I come to this building, you give me updates and updates on what's happening. So really, thank you for guiding this all the way to here.
I'm just glad you too with the Hood School Parents Association, like they're just, there's just so many of them, but they have clearly defined roles and they were able to execute. Like I said, like if we needed money, Mr. Fiorentino was there, Mr. Burnham was there for her advice, the P A votes, like in short notice, like if, like I said, everybody. You go on and on and on and hope to do that at the grand opening ribbon cutting. Just recognize every detail at which they deserve to be recognized. Any other questions? So it is right out that door. If you want to take a peek, or I know I said no earlier, but I'm looking outside and it's nice if you want to, or if you want to just move on to the next item. You can always see it when you leave.
Do you have anything else?
So we do, we have.
We finished the presentation and then I was gonna break for two minutes maybe to look at the very aspects before we move to the budget.
All right, so you are going to be serenaded by the Hood School chorus led by Ms. Jenna Kamal. This is one of her favorite things to come every year and kind of showcase something she says a lot for the students. So she roughly has 52 students participating in chorus. And then, how many do we, so we have 52 in chorus, Miss Kamal?
Yes, we have approximately 20%.
22%?
Uh, 20%. This is, you know, just a preview for the spring show that will all be asked on June 4th because that's a big show, it's a band and chorus. Top lines in the back.
Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound recocious. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. I'm little, I'm the lie, I'm little, I'm the lie. I was supposed to first speak when I was just alive. Me father gave me no such gift and told me I was bad. But then one day I learned a word that Sandy Aiken knows, the biggest word you ever heard, and this is how it goes. Ooh, super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound recocious. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. I'm little, I'm the lie, I'm little, I'm the lie. I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little. You know, this word always say that it'll never be. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always sound recocious. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. I'm little, I'm the lie, I'm little, I'm the lie.
You know, you can say it back, but it's atrocious, aren't you? That's a hell of a reason, that's going a bit too far, I'm sticking in doodles. You sit carefully and rip and change your life. One night I said a two-day girl, and now we girls be wife. She's super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh. Super Calabacolistic, the Aladosh.
We're solo lovers, so it is pretty fun to watch on the big show.
We can't wait.
When is that show?
June 4th, Spring Concert and Arts Night in Vermont. So big, big night for coming to see all of the kids' art and to hear their performances.
And just announced before you came in, it's also right before that is the ribbon cutting.
Right, I saw, that's gonna be awesome. Big one night here.
It's gonna be busy, guys. Excellent. Well, thank you, very well done, friends, you did an amazing job. Thank you for showcasing that. Always a pleasure.
Great job, everyone.
It was awesome.
Thank you.
So that brings the Hood School Showcase Night to a close. Unless there's any other questions, I just want to say thank you to all the families and students for coming out and thank you for coming to the Hood School on the annual journey. And you know, I just, I really loved showcasing everything that we're doing here at Hood School. I'm just so happy to be here, so thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So we'll take a quick break, we don't have to use the computer, but we'll, we'll play our video. A lot of big for the budget, a lot of big for the budget, very exciting. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Ready to go? Okay, so let's go on with the budget first and then we'll go back to policy. It's a cool choice.
We need to close the door.
Are you guys cold?
What is happening here? We can leave open if you guys are spotting.
I think people are just saying it's kind of hot in here.
Okay, all right. Quiet for a minute.
Okay, it's full budget vote. I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Connolly to walk through. Do we have people online?
We do.
Are there new people or people that have already heard this before?
We should like move everybody close.
If it's same people, like probably do an expedited summary and then get to like the what we talked about at the workshop.
Right. So we have made, we had a budget workshop on Friday and we have some changes based on feedback and discussion that occurred at the budget workshop on Friday before the school, a Friday of the vacation week last, just this past Friday. So we're just gonna kind of walk through those changes and highlight where we're at, just do a quick summary on what's sort of on the table for discussion and hopefully a vote, looking to make a vote this evening. So really quick, there's three, three, I'm sorry, there's two school budget proposals that we have under consideration this evening. We had, we're discussing three, we kind of had revised that, those budgets down to two. So the first is the budget that we all know, it's called the balanced budget proposal, it's a non-over-ride budget situation here in North Reading. It's a budget that's 3.9% higher than fiscal year 24. It's about $138.27 million. And that is a budget that, as we discussed, and we're gonna quickly highlight them again, would require reductions over current local services. And the level of current positions is about 15.2 FTE positions in the school department. The latest version of our sort of recommended budget proposal is a budget that is $40,208,446. That budget is 7.7% higher than fiscal year 2024. It's slightly less than the budget that was presented at the public hearing and then again on Wednesday night during the forum, the three board meeting. And the one change to that that's highlighted is that we're still moving forward with four additional four positions. 2.4 of those are driven by enrollment changes at the elementary level based on class sizes increases in the primary grades. 1.6 of those is new positions driven by our strategic plan, as a reminder, 0.6 school adjustment council and 1.0 academic interventionist. The one change, and this came out of conversation on Friday, was the need, desire to not go completely free, free full day kindergarten next year. So we had been phasing free full day kindergarten in over a number of years going back to fiscal year 2021 from the original tuition of $4,250. And currently that tuition currently this fiscal year sits at $2,500. So we have decided to sort of phase that in over the next few years as opposed to going from $2,500 down to a tuition zero effective next fall, September. So this proposal would bring that tuition from $2,500 to $1,500, still a reduction. And what that does is it does result in some additional revenue being available and hopefully getting our accounting that we can draw from next year. Less funding being necessary to draw from the reserve of funding that's built up over a number of years. So that's why you're seeing a sort of a reduction to what our recommended budget proposal is this evening.
Mr. Connolly?
Yeah.
Real quick, so Mr. Gamm and I both went to the thing at the library this weekend, basically nobody else showed up, we've been pretty much issue a hundred. One question that came up was, and I guessed at the number, so I'm gonna ask the actual number for you. What's the total number of FTEs we have right now? Somebody was asking like what's our total number for this year? What would the FTE be in the balanced budget? What would the FTE be in the current improvised?
Sure.
Those are the ones we're asking for. I thought it was like we were around 2.86 or something, but I don't have that in mind.
I'm on a roll with the numbers.
Yeah, whatever the total FTE is.
So it's more than that. So we, we're at 378 currently.
3.78.
378.
Including food service.
Food service. 378.8.
2.8 is closer than the teachers' payrolls.
Oh, and we try to use payrolls.
If you cannot finish your assistance.
Okay, yeah.
It's 3.78. I know I saw 2.66, 3.66, but I don't know.
Yeah, so that includes everything, 378.8. And then again, we are only, the revised recommended budget seating room is four additional, four additional FTEs. So I think it's important that we sort of clarify that, because I think the original preliminary budget that was sort of sent out, presented, information went out to the committee, was, did include that they could eat additional positions. And 2.4 and then 5.6 too. But we have, we have modified that down to four.
So we got 3, 2.8 then, and then the balanced one, it doesn't cut 15, we got a couple of 2.4 is, 2.4 are additional for level services, correct?
So. There, it's enough, well, it's an FTE reduction on what our request is, but.
Yeah, correct. So it's 15.2 less than the 3.78 or less like a 3.78?
It would be, so we have identified.
I think it's three from the 3.78. Is it off of the 3.78? But I think a couple of additional level services wouldn't really be going down like.
What do you think?
That was the question. I think it's good, I think it's good just to know that it's like if you have a question on like, so I'm trying to know what the total number would be of that team.
It's a little, you'd have to get that number exactly because it may be some attrition.
Yeah.
When we're talking 15.42, those are positions in the planning. So if we're already factoring in savings to attrition, I'm not sure.
Right.
Within more than two though, it's maybe.
Yeah, it's a little attrition. Yes, a bit, but. Because 50.4 included, I think, 2.4 new for level services.
Correct, yeah. So we're reducing from level services.
Correct. So it's really like 12. Position, 12 versus position versus 50.0x versus this year.
Correct.
Okay, that's, yeah. So we're like, yeah. That's what, that's what the question was. And I just want to make sure we're aware of this.
Okay.
Because my own budget sheet, so I figured what happened.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So this is really what's under, what we want to present as an update this evening and ask for support. So these are the two budgets that are under consideration. Really quickly, we presented these at a number of times. I don't know if we, there's a couple of minor changes to what we've talked about over the last couple of weeks. So these would be the reductions, again, to get to that balanced budget scenario that column one in the previous slide, which would be the 3.9% increase over fiscal year 2024. So again, it would be, you know, three elementary classroom teachers, impact on certainly class sizes and particularly on the primary grade level. What we have done in this scenario is it only really changes here. We removed the, removal of two school adjustment counselors and we would look to increase six academic educators, both regular and special ed, at the secondary level. As opposed to two school adjustment counselors the next fiscal year. So that would just have a great impact on teacher-student case loads, certainly class sizes, overall breadth, the depth of the curriculum at the high school level, at the middle school level. But that change does allow us to at least restore those two school adjustment counselors at least for one more year. And again, there's no guarantee what would happen in the future, but that is a change that we felt we wanted to make this evening on Friday when we discussed, when we discussed that. So that's one change. Everything else is sort of similar, the school nursing position, 2.5 reduction of the nursing position, technology, support staff, 2.5 reduction, academic support, tutors, 1.2 reduction of the treatment support at the elementary level. Custodial cleaning staff, a reduction, athletic coaching staff, there would be a reduction, general classroom kindergarten support, and there would be a reduction to get to that balanced budget. And then the other item that changed here from what was presented at the public hearing was we also removed the school, the late, reduction of the late bus at the middle school mainly. We've taken that $15,000 and we replaced that with additional constitute school and district expense budgets. That number increased by $5,000. And then we also took a little more risk and added an additional $10,000 to a food service account offset to increase the indirect cost offset for utilities and cleaning services out of the food service revolving account. So it was a little bit more sort of an apparent risk in that, in those adjustments. But it did, that is what allowed the $15,000 reduction previously listed for the late bus at the middle school. All of the areas are the same that was previously presented. There was conversation about where we would look to increase the user fees as we were trying to find $40,000 in additional offset of user fee, what that would look like. We certainly could have options, but I think the most recommended option would be to focus that on the busing, the bus fee for next year. That's where we're seeing a large increase to the operational budget, the fixed cost increase because of the increase in the rates due to several dynamics going on in that market with fuel escalation costs, sort of qualified cost drivers, variety of things, just causing those rates to go up. We're still below the market. It's advantageous for us to renew that society, that option here that's in that existing contract. But we're still seeing an 8%, spike in those costs. So trying to increase that user fee, though we don't want to ever kind of look to do that, I guess it's somewhat prudent to help us reduce that, that cost and that impact on the operational budget. So us to kind of cap, safely capture $40,000, we would be looking at an individual cost of about $500 per bus pass and family pass of $800, which is currently at $425 per bus pass and a family pass of $700.
We could, we could discuss the bus fee, though, if it's tabled, just like the first question would be, do we have that discussion? Just like make sure we are not charging people more than the actual cost for students. So there's some that we have to plus for free.
Yeah, we're welcome over there.
Yeah, just want to make sure that the actual cost for a rider is less than that.
Yeah, we're beating those odds. Yeah, we're, we're capturing 30 times, 40%.
Okay.
We're at the cost, if we were the optional program that we really need like six buses for, we'd be on $12,000 per bus pass, I'm not even close to it.
Okay. That's important to know, we're talking about this used to, but it's still an optional program, it's still being some.
Right.
Subsidized by the media, by the budget, so.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think over time, as those costs have risen, we've kept the bus fee as low as possible and haven't had increases for a number of years. We've kind of, more of those costs over time has really shifted. So we haven't really been at that 50/50 split for 700, you know, 700 years.
This is, I brought this up before and I remember you had a response for it and I'm just revisiting it because of this situation right? Has there ever been any consideration, I know this confused the free bus costs because it's different buckets, but for parking eight?
There has. So we did look at that a number of years ago, I want to say around 2017, 18. We had some, again, we're trying to close a budget gap and there's a lot of conversation around that. It was, it was rejected at that time for consideration. It wasn't gonna bring in a significant amount of revenue, we looked at $300, $125, $150 parking fee at the high school, just gonna generate in the areas around $25,000, $30,000. It had, again, it has to then offset sort of maintenance costs of the park at all, and strike in upkeep, snowing rules. So we would certainly be able to quantify those costs to get to that additional revenue source. At the time, it wasn't worth that, but it has been considered in the past.
As we continually, and I know the bus costs have passed, but it's continually increased bus cost. You know, just looking at, you know, some kids take the bus because they can't afford a car, so all this.
Right, yeah.
You just wonder like, is there some equity there?
Yeah, no, that's what we, yeah, we certainly discussed that.
And how, and sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It has been, it was a good, that's kind of what we were talking about, you know, several years ago as well.
My other question, if I can keep going.
Yeah.
Just looking at the reductions, right, the reduction in lots of different categories, different FTE. Does reduction, is that a fancy way of saying elimination? Or is it, is there, is that like say looking at the nursing or academic support? Is that mean, is that mean they're going down in FTE but not losing a position? Or, and I know there's times, things like, how many of you have truly lost positions? I'm really just curious, because I know how hard it works to come to these numbers.
So they're all lost positions except for the two additional classroom positions.
But in terms of people with jobs that will be lost.
So.
Is that to make sure that they're.
Yeah, possibly. You know, and I'll just acknowledge, I don't want to say this, we did, we did have a slide come out about the churn piece. There's a couple of people on the call that may be personally impacted. So our priority, not our priority, is to preserve the positions for people, right? So all these other costs that are there, you know, you will see, we've reordered and restructured a few things, but this is no reflection in any way on the performance or the way people are doing it there. We need all of these positions and we do want to drive this district forward. We need, you know, we're, we're a very good district, we want to be a great district. We want to do all the things in our vision that are gonna result in better quality education for our students, higher scores, higher achievement. And the teachers that we have, the low class sizes and the nursing support and, you know, the interventionist, everything that's in our budget that we're cutting is devastating, you know? And it's really, really difficult to prioritize if we can bring anything back, if we don't get an override, if we have to make all these cuts and then we get something, we'll talk about that. But what we did is we prioritized it based upon full-time positions in a different district, sort of years of service. And so that's sort of our priority was to get to that same point. This definitely does impact that. There's, there's a few that might be attrition and as time goes on, when people talk about things changing, right? If we get a retirement tomorrow and we don't need to fill it, then that's another one that we can move, like. And again, it's not that we don't need to fill it, it's that that might be easier than taking a job when someone has a job. And those are the things that we will continue to try to figure out, but that usually gets you maybe one, maybe two things. We've got a lot more here that you're gonna slide this year.
Yeah, like in the past year, a year like last year where we reduced a couple, a few, two or three positions, if I remember correctly. Obviously one or two retirements, then you're sort of back where you started, but you can't expect that. I mean, you're.
Right, just giving that a good long consensus.
So yeah, I think that was, obviously the 0.5 reductions here would be kind of 1.0 positions to a 0.5 on full, full reduction.
I think the other, the macro, the two macro things to point out here, number one, even the balanced budget has a 3.9% increase. Proposition two and a half, 3.9%.
Yeah, 3.9%.
Proposition two and a half means revenues go up 2.5% every year. The reason that's more than that is because we have some new growth still from market planning next year, FY '26, I think as the last year, there's gonna be any of that. And we are, and there are expenses that are frankly higher than 2.5% already. And so this is using some free cash from years past. And so just understand that like, this is, 50.2 is a, is a, is more than proct 2.5 actually supports. And if we do not have an override, we're not talking about if we don't get an override and there's 15 positions. We don't get an override next three years, we're gonna say 40 or 50 positions. Because those are gonna be similar size cuts each of the next two years because the gap between revenue and, and expenses does not go down next year. And the revenue we'll actually have will be less because some free cash will not be generated. And so, just so people that can appreciate, like, the override, when we say $10 million over the next three years, you know, 3 million, 3.5 million each year, we're talking about, if nothing happened in the next three years, we're talking about, again, I won't go on the numbers here, probably 50 positions is what we're talking about. And so if not just 15 and that everything is, you know, hunky-dory next year, this is fixing this here and then you still have the same gap or even a worse gap the next two years.
It's not a one-year problem.
No.
We can't have a one-year solution. We've worked at it for many, many years as a team to sort of make it not as public, right? We find a way to get through it every year and we've been talking about this for several years. Through the SFRF, as we talk about it, and talk about deleting, we've been paving that way and laying that framework for several years, but this is the year we're really doing this ahead, putting to the public to weigh in on the importance of, you know? If these are the things that we want to see preserved in our district, then we need to support that, I vote.
And I very much appreciate the few people on the call that are paying attention. And, you know, some people are calling community meetings, but two people showed up to the community meeting that are not on board right now, two. And I don't think people understand what this is and this is one. And I don't think people understand what this is, and this is one year that, that your team works, yeah.
That's a great point.
It's just, I guess.
And we always, the administration's goal in developing lists, it's never easy. Dr. McKay is here, we were in the hall this morning going, again, going over the list and reviewing it and discussing these very difficult decisions. We always try to find a way to make it be sort of the least harmful list. And this, everything on here is going to occur in the back of our services. And unfortunately, the problem will not go away as we just move to, you know.
We're talking about level services now, and fiscal year, we're talking about services overall. We're talking about programs. We're talking about not just fewer people, like smaller or bigger class size, we're talking about programs. And.
Would you allow, right, maybe if it costs any more?
Yeah, so please. Yeah. In any event, I agree with what's been out there. I know we're going to talk about what we can get back. And, and again, I think Noel brought up in the workshop, the kindergarten payment. And again, I would just say on the record, I completely disagree with the idea of not getting two full day kindergarten right away. However, I appreciate that we're trying to put something out there that is palatable to the public and we should hear the public. I think that we've criticized public officials before when you don't listen to the public, and so we have to hear the feedback. And so I appreciate that, and so I think we should compromise. And it's a good, it's a good compromise solution to say, we're going to keep on the path of doing. So we're not asking for money to do more than we would have done, you know, in another way.
Just sort of going with what we're doing.
Right. That's what we're doing, and so I appreciate it. And so, you know, I think that's what we're trying to do.
I think we also current off to that this is a commercial position. We'll see that in a reservation, like, as well. Again, just trying to look at the full-time positions that are currently in place.
Right, yeah. So, so this next slide shows if additional funds are to be identified, say from now until June 30th, then I guess the first question might be why would that happen or how would that be the case? So the state budget is still kind of in flux. It still remains somewhat fluid. It's, it's in the, it's on its way to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. The governor released his budget. The House gave back, he actually funded an increase to Chapter 70, State Aid, the educational state aid through the Chapter 70 program. He actually increased the base level minimum spending among pure pupil that all districts receive, including North Reading, from what was set by the governor at $30 to potentially as high as $104. So now that goes on to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. We don't really know what could happen. It has to kind of work its way through that process. Could be as mid-June to the end of June before it's finalized. But if that were to be finalized, it could free up some additional revenue.
And the rest of we have in our office, $30, correct?
Correct.
So just to be clear, the $30 would be a sort of a standard level increase in Chapter 70, correct? $30 per student.
Correct.
Adds up to $60,000.
Correct, yeah.
That's the actual ones. And, and so, yeah, so what the House is proposing, or at least I don't know if it's been voted on or just in their committee, but it's $104 per person.
Correct.
As we say, an extra $160,000, but we don't know what the final.
Your side reductions, another area is in that sound.
So if that prevails, we might get an extra $150,000 per student.
Correct.
Technically goes to the overall revenue.
Sure, the revenue might, if you have to work its way through the May's plan, which is something we talked about in the next week.
Correct, so. So that's just one, one way that some additional revenue could be identified. I, Dr. Kay is working on trying to identify grant for next year, which could be, again, another just one type revenue source that could help free up some additional revenue that could kind of really defer some of these cuts for another year if we have access to the grant.
Turnover, whatever, if we can get.
So we're talking about the diversity issue that we had tonight, we received, and we were applying to the government.
What we think the odds for this, we are getting, I mean, it sounds like maybe we get something, but right here, we have almost about $150,000.
Yeah.
That's pretty unlikely.
Very unlikely. I think we're looking at a couple of hundred dollars.
That's, that's.
I just say it's important that we be upfront that this, there's always a potential of some, like, somewhere.
But it's not going to make up the gap.
But it's not going to make it. So we don't make up the gap, and it certainly has to go through the revenue plan, have different boards and committees weighing in on the revenue. It should happen.
So Jason can't do that. I would most. The elementary classroom teacher is first in the list, so these actually go in order from top to bottom. So the first back would be 1.0 elementary classroom teacher. The second would be 2.0 secondary classroom teachers. Then we would look at the additional 2.0 elementary classroom teachers. And again, the reason for that priority order at this time is based upon full-time current needs. And then the reservation of the nurse to 4.5 and the academic support tutors. And then there's another 10, 15 years after that, that was the priority, as Mr. Freeman said, this gets us to almost $500,000. I think at best we're getting close to 200 or so, if everything in the department having on the table comes through at full.
Any of that's a precaution.
Yeah. So I think it was important to reiterate through our, our processes, we talk about the implications of an override. One of the things that our, our finance planning team decided upon is to address this as a multiple-year problem with a multiple-year solution. We're having these conversations every year, and one of the risks that we run through this process is people that are, you know, at risk of losing a job may apply to, you know, burn the hand some where else. And we have the potential of losing some, we really, really excellent people. I hope that doesn't happen. We're giving every assurance we can to try to do that. So I'm hoping people can see their positions here and with us. But the, one of the nice pieces about the three-year override presentation is that we at least have that stability over the next few years and we're able to move through that without having to go through this year, after year, after year. A lot of districts that have had to go through that process, year after year after year, it's looking people that are hiring with that. There's a lot of turnover in those districts, and it changes the character of the district very quickly. That's not a place I want to be, which is why I think bringing us to the orders is the best way to do this. Because I don't think that's a place anyone wants to, it's not the school system anymore. Basically, they're paring down structures. Yes.
So the final slide just represents sort of the summary of what's kind of on the table that can be concluded from the process at this point. So we're really looking at two budget scenarios, one of which reflects the first column, which is really a non-override budget or could be a balanced budget within the available revenues at the time. That is that 3.9% budget that hired this year to 2024. And what does that budget do? It's a budget that does meet the contractual salary and operational expense obligation that we do have, fixed cost increases, utilities, maintenance increases, busing increases, other obligations that we obviously are required to do. It doesn't eliminate from level services, I will say 15.2 FTE position that we identified and just kind of spoke to. We've talked about some of these bulleted impacts of that. Certainly higher class sizes, higher teacher, student teacher caseloads at all levels, less of breadth and depth of curriculum options at the secondary level, reduced ability to address student, student health issues, aggressive coverage, less digital learning technology staff, construction, tech support, lessened ability to address students that need academic support, early intervention strategies, especially in math and ELA at the elementary level would be impacted, to do less funding for classroom supplies and technology, less custodial staff for complete services and coverage needs, higher approach to student app ratios, and then just, I think, overall higher risk for budget overages, increased reliance on special revenue accounts, which could put future, convert one's future revenue accounts in the future budget years. And then the potential, obviously, as we talked about, increased use of fees to families, particularly potentially in the bussing program. The, what we're calling the revised recommended budget, or what would be a budget that would be supported by a proposition to an app override vote, again, is a budget that meets our contractual salary and operational expense obligations. It's a budget that would not include any reduction to our current staffing levels. It would not include any reduction to level services. It's a budget that maintains level services, improving our current class size guidelines and objectives and goals, particularly in the primary undergrades and grades that drive them through grade two. It rejects student and teacher caseloads at all levels in terms of what are optimal for student achievement and student learning. It maintains our current nursing services, technology support, structure and systems, our custodial staffing levels, does not reduce any extracurricular activity programs, particularly athletic program, and our reductions would not occur. Maintains and enhances our ability for the district to address mental health concerns and issues for students at all levels. So this is really that 0.6 school adjustment, a very modest increase, but it does allow us to really meet some objectives and move those initiatives that have been in our strategic plan for a number of years forward. It maintains and enhances our ability for the district to address student needs for academic support in math and ELA. Not losing those academic support tutors at each elementary level. It's essential in allowing us to address the needs of students, be more proactive, provide those early intervention strategies, and enhancing that with a professional physician. That's really not where we want to be. We want to be adding more support, but that one professional physician would enhance that, that, that structure. And then it doesn't achieve free full day kindergarten next year. This is the revision from the public hearing presentation, but it does include a plan to continue to reduce that tuition, which is what we've been doing now for a number of years since fiscal year 2021. And we would go from a 20, this proposal that was presented would go from tuition of $2,500 to $1,500. So we would continue that phase in plan to move eventually to free full day kindergarten to the future.
One, one question I have, Michael, the total FTE cap, does that count substitutes?
No.
So that's just something I want to point out. When we talk about relationships, when we talk about telling someone that they're out of a job, if I'm out on a year-long leave and Michael fills in for me for the year, I form relationships with the community, with the school, with the, you know, with the students, with certain families, and if we're adding a classroom next year, I come back and we're both free, right? We're still telling, in this scenario, we're telling, so even though it's maybe a new position because I'm coming back, you have to need change. So that, that's where it gets really gray with some of these conversations that we're trying to communicate. So when I say we're having conversations with people, 15, 14 positions, and maybe one or two that are retiring for things, but then there's those other gray areas with substitutes who are of course excellent, some of these long-term stuff we have phenomenal, and we want to find a replacement because there's a lot of promise and we want to, we want to go with them and, and the road busts. Those cuts have a very bad influence. So I want to find, that might not show up in a clear, not, not an equation, FTE, it's, it's not hiding anything, it's just, it's commerce with the consensus.
It just, it just denies the ability to build organization, to want to, with people that you've already discovered, good people, which you just can't keep them because they're only here as a more conscious.
And you might not show up in a quick calculus of the position.
Again, with inflation, there's no way to do what we can, or, or, or we want to buy more money now. I hope people get behind it. I don't care if they're out and say, we don't want this, not just this year, but future years. I don't think you need to get behind it because I've heard everything, I've actually heard from people that are in, in North Reading saying, well, we don't need this. And so it's disheartening. So I hope people wake up and realize the impact before they lose position for a year or two years, and then people realize, oh, wait, they aren't going the way they used to.
And I would say that I appreciate the willingness and, you know, final decisions have been made, but the willingness of the other boards to consider this, the finance committee and the support board and some capital for the committee. You know, that's a hard thing to even talk about, and they're, and they're talking about seriously, and I think it will come forward with the House, so I appreciate all that.
These cuts you've touched every year, custodial to digital learning, technology, parent professionals, teaching physicians, educated physicians.
So before we take the vote, I just want to, I know there's people that took their time to listen in tonight, if they have any comments, please feel free to raise their hand and Dr. Daly. If any committee members have any other comments, questions?
When we, when we present this at a town meeting, were we presenting a presentation or was it just a?
So we present, yeah. And, and we are ahead of the sunboard in terms of that part. They have more work to do, I think.
Exactly, identifying their cuts. I think, for instance, a slide like that, they, they just don't quite have that, they're not right, they're not going where they can say, here's what it looks like here, here's what it will look like here. But they're, they're getting there.
Our, our hope is that we get a lot of turnout of their information sessions and messages out there, and we can be sustained. I think I agree. So this, to me, is the, one of the key slides, and we're going to get out of the information presentations as well. Here's what you're getting, you know, here's what you're losing, and here's what you're getting.
And, and, and I was so focused on the dire nature of this, I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Conley and Dr. Daly. It's always, we always think Mr. Conley for the budget part, and you do an excellent job on putting this together and identifying where to go. But I think Dr. Daly this year even more so because when we're identifying cuts and trying to figure out where we can use that about that at least impacting students really more as well, so I appreciate both of you doing this very hard exercise and.
So, like I said, we come together often, came together this morning, the conversations are not easy, you know, but then everyone realizes, what can I give for the greater good, you know? And where is it all going down? Where can we give? It's, it's a challenging conversation. And these are, none of these cuts are, we can, these are all going to be very impactful.
So I'll entertain a motion. The only suggestion I have on the motion is I don't think you should require an override vote. It makes it sound like that's an override. It's a second budget of a blank budget, which would be required override. Is that down? Do you have a big motion for us?
Oh, yeah, I actually.
Yeah, I'm modifying that slightly.
Yeah.
It says an override of 40 million, and we're not asking for.
That makes sense, yeah.
I move that the school committee approve and hereby adopt the following fiscal year 25 school operating budgets to both be considered at the annual town meeting on June 10. First, a balanced, non-override budget of $38,772,128, which represents an increase of 3.9%, or $1,452,533 over fiscal year 24. And second, a budget of $40,208,446, which represents an increase of 7.7%, or $2,888,851 over fiscal year 24. Which budget would require an override vote by the town?
Second, we have a motion, we have a second, and for the discussion. And the only, the only question is how we're presenting it, but I think it's, okay, all those are favor? I propose extension, passes by zero unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay. End of policies or is it school choice?
Just school choice first.
School choice vote.
Okay.
Open up, public hearing. I hope for the public hearing, that's school choice vote for fiscal year 25. Dr. Daly, you want to do the discussion?
Sure. We, your packages and information. We, your packages and information to consider, there is the documentation here that I'm not sure if you had a chance to review, just, you always get the question of which districts are currently participating in school choice.
My only question on that was, whatever said yes, but it said you need to ask the district, is it a yes or a no? A lot of those said, you need, we don't really have information, you have to ask the district, and, but it said yes.
Yeah, that means they may have been late in turning in there.
But does the, does the yes mean yes, or does it mean no?
I think, I think the way the law is written is we assume yes if they don't complete it by June first, so those could be no's.
So it could still be no's, okay.
But I think you can see the characteristics of a lot of the districts, smaller rural districts, in certain parts of the state are more open. I think when you look at our area, there's, Michael, I never looked at this one in the packet, it was in the, I don't know if you saw this document in the, does everyone have this? I can just pass it out. But that, I can link it in there, it's in the forward. But this is just our annual presentation, just some highlights about it, just showing some comparisons, just to see what the figures are. Okay.
Actually, one question that relates to the budget, yes, to an extent, but what's the average cost to educate a student in Massachusetts, and what's the average cost for North Reading? I don't usually be below the average.
Heard people.
From individuals.
So, the most recent FYR 23 data that just, I just got outsized by the DESI not too long ago. The state average cost, and this is total all funds, in district, out district, all funding approach, state average is $21,116 per year. North Reading is currently slightly below that average at $20,852.
Okay. Perfect. And that's for, that's, what year?
Last fiscal year's expenditures versus the last recently, we have a lot of the rest of the flight.
Okay. Thank you.
So we typically have a motion that states to not participate in school choice because the program as a present constructed ensures that the needs of subjects in commonwealth cannot be met. In our administration records, not be in school choice.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't think any, I don't think any changes changed since last year.
Especially given the, yeah.
Thank you.
Someone else can read it because it's too small for me. I don't have my glasses.
Pilot up, I can't.
Here, let me read it. I don't have that.
We're old, and I forgot my glasses, which is because I'm old.
Where is it? Where's the motion?
It's in the second paragraph.
I got it.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, I believe that the committee approves that we do not participate in school choice because the program as a present constructed ensures that the needs of subjects in commonwealth cannot be met.
Second? Motion for a second, any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Go back to policies. Second reading of policies. Oh, yeah, we have to close the public meeting. Do I need a vote? I need a vote for both.
I move that we close for school choice. Yeah, school choice. Second?
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Should we roll call votes?
Aye.
Aye.
I do the same shit that I did going to.
Okay. On to policies, back to policies. Mr. Prey, do you think we ought to use policies? Want to? Uh, sure. I think, again, I think, just, I mean, where some of the, it looked like some of the changes we talked about were made, so if you wanted to sign each of them, make a motion, we'll have a second, any discussion, and then we'll, then we'll.
I believe I updated all the changes, the capitalizations. If there's something that's not there, just to point out.
Obviously, capitalizations and things like that could be done.
Again, taken verbatim from the, I did go ahead and make some of the changes that were discussed, it was voted down, so we can talk about it. On one of the policies, just.
We'll turn that to DJ.
That's the one that we discussed about the superintendent designee. I'm reviewing the video as I was doing it, I'm thinking, what have I got to lose by saying it the way it was framed? So I did put it in that way, we can discuss it again, and, so. So DIFBA is the first, how did we get that? All right. So why don't we just sort of start from the top? The first one is policy DIFBA fiscal management. So this is a motion to, a motion to accept the second reading of policy DIFBA fiscal management.
Second? Motion for the second. Okay, any discussion on this one? Hearing not all, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Next one is policy DJ, also fiscal management expenditure of funds. Start with that next, second by one of us. So this is a motion to approve the second reading of policy DJ fiscal management expenditure of funds.
Second? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And the next one is what we were just talking about, this is policy DJ, also fiscal management purchasing. So this is a motion to approve for second reading, policy DJ, fiscal management purchasing.
Second? Okay, and so this is one that I voted no on, just because it's a bit different, like they added it to oversee, so I'm fine with that. Who else have issues with this? Okay. Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
The next one down is policy DJ, fiscal management procurement requirements. And it's a motion to approve the second reading for policy DJ, fiscal management procurement requirements.
Second? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Next one down is policy GBEBD. This is like an eye test.
All right. Did you say GBEBD?
Yes. My new glasses. Online funding and solicitations, crowdfunding. So this is a motion to approve, second reading for policy GBEBD, online funding and solicitations, solicitations, crowdfunding.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Next one to show it. Next policy is EFC, universal free school meals. So this is a motion to approve the second reading for policy EFC, universal free school meals.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
So the next one is a replacement policy. This is policy EFD, school nutrition program charge policy, and it's replacing EC. So this is a motion to approve, approve for second reading, policy EFD, school nutrition program charge policy.
Second?
Answer replace, sorry, answer replace EC.
Okay. Second? Motion, second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That's all?
Yep.
Thank you very much. We'll be gone, we have minutes.
I move to approve the session that is a school committee committee on, a roll date 2024 as per.
Second? Motion for a second. The only discussion I have, I think Jen Leeder's name, it's not Leeder's, L-E-D-E-R-S. I was going to say, there are signs around top. But just to, yeah, just to correct the spelling, so. Okay, just with the correction, correction of the spelling, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Extentions, so pass four, four zero.
I move to approve the executive session, this will be on 40, 43, 44.
Second? Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Okay, pass four zero.
I move to approve the budget for the child parents, this will be on 42, 43.
Second? Motion for the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Passes four zero.
I missed that.
Budget update, the panel?
Yes, thank you. So the April budget report is in your packet this evening. Not a lot of new information, but we're drivers from the March report. We're obviously in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, so we're starting to get into kind of close elbow, review all open conferences, see what's available. As is typical each year, we had some unanticipated expenses, certainly some additional special education costs that are cruising that we've been able to address, mostly because we took some measures at the end of previous fiscal years, which we'll all review, which will create some additional flexibility. We've had some additional maintenance, building expenses lies, we can adjust those. Most of these unexpected costs, we still think it's a key element of the budget. And I think we're in good financial standing as we begin to define the fiscal year. Food service program continues to perform well, and we see some really new participation in that program as revenues, we'll be able to, to improve that account, be able to take measures to increase some offsets like we just discussed, and actually the budget. And current revenues, yeah.
Questions? Questions? My only question would be on food service. If, if the state continues to fund the free meals, and we're able to get the guaranteed payout that we're promised in that contract, I know we put money into the warming fund and to use for various things, I just think we should maybe talk in the future about how large we want that account to get, because unless we plan on doing big projects, like buying big physical things for the kitchen or something like that, I think we should think about trying to pay back within a year, within a year or so, like some of the internal costs that we can use it for, should we free up cash to repay special education expenses if we need to? Do I just worry about having that account get so, get large? Because it's a large amount of money we could be giving, unless there's a specific thing that we're saving to use that money for, if there are other things we have, and just want it to be an account that we really can only use certain things on, you know, to a little bit.
Yeah. It's an account that's highly audited, it's being audited currently, we are over the sort of the threshold you're, you're supposed to be at in terms of the amount that they want to allow at, that's a surplus balance in the account.
Right.
We are over that.
Right.
There is some immediate capital needs of the program that we're trying to address, we're supposed to look at some equipment that needs to be replaced, and tables that need to be replaced. There is walk-in freezers, refrigerating equipment that need to have some pretty wide repairs, if the owner is squashing this building in particular, that we're going to be addressing, which we break some of that down. We are looking to perhaps increase some of the hours on the staff, because of the labor analysis that we do monthly, because revenue law, sale of the house versus sold is up, I think there's a need to increase the hours to address that, and add some, some substitute coverages that sort of like isolate around permanent building subs that come in and kind of float where it's needed, we're looking to do a similar model at the food service. So we'll address those, but I think we will certainly have, if everything continues as it is in the current structure, free meals, free meals, we'll have, we should have those other measures.
Okay, I just want to make sure that when we can, if there's direct income or cost that we can, you either before balancing to like.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Conley? Staffing? Bailey?
I have a quick staffing update. At the little school, we have a long-term subsidy paraprofessional, general, near daycare, Ryan Smith, a long-term subsidy paraprofessional in special education at the little school.
Very much. Donation.
So as we heard earlier, this is all related to that, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a pie and material in kind donation valued at $106,607 from Cavallari Construction Company for the playground project for the hood school.
Second? 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 Just for discussion, thank you very much.
Yeah, it feels like there should be, yeah, an additional.
How about on June 4th, there might be some.
I think, I, that's true.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
So the amount's the same, is that because it's like a joint thing on the second one? Or is there, should the amounts be the same?
Are we accepting $106,000 twice or is it?
Memo has the same dollar amount in each of the two, one from Benevento. It's one, it's one, yes. From Cavallari and Benevento?
I think Benevento was separate, like $6,800 and something.
Okay, that's the, so that's, that value is.
Cavallari was $106.
Yeah. You have the dollar on Benevento, I just do the next time.
I thought it was included in the same, I think it's broken out somewhere on it.
Yeah. I might have to do the.
It's like $6,850.
We'll hold off on that.
So we'll do this one later.
Let's hold off.
The first one was correct, it was $6,600. I think they maybe, when they presented this, they changed the number on the second.
Well, let me, as long as we're on the topic, let's at least give recognition that, you know, fantastic, it's no less appreciated, we'll get it right, but for the people of Benevento, thank you.
And it sounds not just a dollar amount, but the response time.
Absolutely. Everything about it.
Yeah. For both, for both words.
Exactly. Wonderful. Okay, any else with the grants? Done, so you want to talk about it?
We did receive sort of one official award, that we received the diversification grant that I applied for with Mr. Clean. This is sort of year two of the grant that we received last year. We're able to use this for many different aspects of diversification, and it's $91,000 and change.
Is it, have we received it or we should have voted accept, or is this just more an organization?
We can vote to accept, I just don't have the official award letter to share with you, but we have officially received it. $91,286 for teacher diversification, as I alluded to earlier, just, you know, I have, part of what we wrote into that was some items that are reversible as a part of our diversification efforts, and so we're hopeful that some of that can be restored to the budget for some for this year, some for next year. This is a grant that goes through September, so we'll be able to use that by 25 for this one. So this was great news to give over the break, and it may, it may be able to help us in a small way, but some of the money is earmarked from other.
Some of the money is earmarked from other pieces that include some incentives to hire in routine staff, so.
And who, who was the grant from?
This is from the Department of Education.
From guess. So, I, I'll move that the committee vote to accept, uh, a grant from the Department of Special, uh, of Elementary and Secondary Education. Of $91,286 for teacher diversification.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous. If I only have a comment on this is, a lot of grants, but, um. Money. Thank you.
Couldn't win that one.
You know, something that's a pass, that is, other funds that we. Oh, this is, we, we should have the NIVOL, a scholarship. That scholarship, that every.
The, I'd like to see scholarship.
Did I forward that to you or not, that or if you received it?
No.
Uh, we, we could forward it to you then, I think the committee all received it about, about having a turn for the scholarship that we can give away.
It's one we've told it on before, it's a one that comes in.
Okay, I thought you were out there, so I, I could forward it to you. If I could forward it to you, and then, I don't know if we have to, we have to kind of vote to accept that as well. Scholarship or not.
Directly, it doesn't come through our, our books, so I don't think.
Forward it to me, we can figure that out.
Okay.
For you.
Yeah. No override triple pass?
No.
Subcommittee updates, finance planning team. We've been meeting, we've been talking about the budget happen, sending it on straight. Capital planning improvement committee.
We met, yeah, we met last week. Sorry, vacation week. We're, we're pretty much to the point of finalization, that being sent over, I think today, actually. I remember, if I remember last email properly.
Now, can I ask two questions on this? Number one, is everything contingent upon, if the override doesn't pass? Because my understanding was that the override doesn't pass, some of the more immediate capital projects will be funded, and some of these other projects that you're voting on will not be funded. Is that not the case, or is that the case?
I, I missed the last two meetings, I, I'd have to say that's. I mean, it is.
Because I, I, my understanding was that like, because part of the override vote is for capital projects, and things like the, the financing on the Justice Street Bridge and.
Big capital.
Some big capital projects that even if, if the override does not pass, my understanding was that they're not going to wait, and they're not going to try to do a debt exclusion. They're probably, they're probably going to fund it from other funds that would then mean you're not getting the.
That's correct.
The CIP, the CIPC grants?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, so they're working on a list that if it override passes, this is what's happening? And if it doesn't, it's going to be different because some of those capital projects are not there.
Right.
Okay. And then, the second one is, do we have any, can you share yet what projects we think might be funded in schools, or do you not know that yet?
Uh, no, we do, there was, uh.
They released that today. I have the list today. It looks like all the projects are, are in the list to be funded.
Uh, but there was a reduction in one. One of the technology pieces got reduced by like half, uh, from like two hundred to two hundred thousand.
Lot to do.
There were a couple of extra things on too.
Yeah, I mean, the.
There were need, there were need.
Oh, no, no, hey, hey, no, no.
Hey, we're not on our list again. October's coming.
Oh, I have to.
They reduced our technology.
Right. I think, uh, as of the last meeting, we did.
Okay.
What are out there?
No, they did reduce a couple of things. Vehicle.
So, we, we have the hood school, phase one of the roof restoration project, to get that project started. We could have the technology, structural equipment, replacement in the hood school and the high school. Um, we were hoping for $20,000, I think, a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand. I'm not sure. Uh, the elementary systems upgrade, um, is at $60,000. That, that would be the alarm systems, that's just kind of like the panels and wiring, um, systems, replacement. The modular feasibility study, the feasibility study in the modular, um, buildings. And then classroom window replacement of $75,000 at the hood, little phase two. And then the final one was their F450 utility truck replacement.
And all those are out there? Just the reduction in technology?
That, yes.
Excellent. Good job.
Speak out, Michael, I hope you're gonna help us.
Missing the last two.
I was gonna say, no, just kidding.
I know.
One question that came, popped in my head this morning about the override and the projects that they're, uh, at the town side is including the debt service up in the override. When we talk about each year, how much of the levy increase are we going to be using up? I don't know if we've talked about those projects, are like, are all of those projects going to be bonded in year one, and therefore, it's going to impact people's taxes in year one? Or is it going to be spread out? This, this is a question we don't, may not know the answer to, don't know the answer to, but it's a clarification we can, want to make sure we have. As we talk about, we anticipate in one year it'll be this, and the next two years it'll be that.
But it's bonded in year one, paid over the multi-year.
Right, right. But I'm saying that it's the debt service that we're including. If they don't, if they don't bond it until year three, then it's not impacting your taxes until year three. So, that's, that's, that's the.
Yeah, we have, we have to figure out that number for year one, too, like, you know, we're all like.
That's what we could, yeah, basically, basically, that's what I'm saying.
So, it could be.
We, we know what our number is, we know what our number is, the town's probably pretty close to know what their number is, but then there's the capital.
Right. So, it could be a lesser number for year one anyways, so. Okay. Good work, Michael, uh, the CIPC, and. And then, some committee schedule, finance planning team, we're meeting again on May 3rd, at 8:15 AM.
We're not meeting Friday?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
No, I didn't have it in my calendar, it seems like three, three, it's always on.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I think I have it on my calendar, but I didn't put it in there. Look to see. A lot of subcommittees meeting May 21st, uh, you know, finance subcommittee meeting, May 21st at 3:15. Administrative report.
First one.
Before we do future business, I will just take two minutes to thank Mr. McGowan's vote. You know, I hope this is not Mr. McGowan's last meeting, and if it is, we will bring you back, but you're up for reelection, so I will not say too much about you, but I will say, good luck on, at the election. And I hope you're sitting next to me for the next one, and if not, we'll call you back in May properly. But I will say, for, um, I found, well, I know it's been a very rough six years for schools. I mean, I think you probably came out right about the time the superintendent had retired. We had to try to find a superintendent, and I guess we sort of did. And, you know, I think you've been a quiet voice, but a very important voice in the community for many years. I remember having a lot of discussions through the vote in about, you know, meeting personally, about, you know, where to go, and I think, you know. We have a, we have an interesting talent over there, because we have different viewpoints, and I think your viewpoint has been very important throughout. Sometimes it's not like getting this thing passed, but it might be making this thing a little bit better, a little more acceptable to everybody. And, you know, I value your, your comments, I value your leaderships, I value your friendship, and I'm sad that people aren't being considered up to me. You know, the next meeting, but very much appreciate the time, and I know it's a, it's a huge commitment to serve, and very much appreciate all the time you've given to us.
I could just echo that, I think, certainly with the curriculum, we've talked a lot, we've helped guide a lot in season. But I do think back to COVID, standing by Friday, having hour-long conversation with you about masks, about children, you know. The two of us talking about our own children experiences, and I, I do get a lot of feedback, and I did at the time, I just continue to get feedback about things we did during that difficult time. That made it the best possible to do for kids, and we did, we made decisions that a lot of towns didn't, and we went in some different directions in a lot of ways. A huge part of that was, all of you, but, but Diana, in a lot of way, helped to guide us through that. That's something that you don't understand a lot, it comes out, um, and so I, I really want to person thank you for all you've done, helped guide this district for the last six years. Thank you so much. I'd just say, since we're, uh, sort of siblings for six years, uh, coming together. Uh, you, we had, you had two very different campaigns, uh, volunteering after no one stepped up in the second position, do a writing campaign, did the writing campaign the right way. You know, made yourself available to the public, uh, and then the election three years ago, which was just.
So, what you did there?
Yeah, you, you didn't do anything, but, uh, uh, there was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of strike around that, and a lot of it fell on your shoulders that it didn't need to, and you kept, you kept going. And, uh, I know it's, it's been a tough six years, but I really value you as well, and I agree, the way you've shaped the decisions we made is.
I didn't see any of that, so.
Whatever, to see you.
I've enjoyed working with every little one of you, it's been a pleasure, and I'm very grateful for the last six years, so I hope to support you with all of you, very well. And I know you guys will see nice forward, and I see you all the time.
No, I can't, you can't escape me, you see each other.
But I know you guys will make the right decisions in the district, and I hope that the town as well.
And hopefully you're a member of the public that reaches out to us.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not being a community, I'm still.
You know, you know how to find us.
Still pop myself in the audience.
You can reach out with comments, and now, now that you're out.
Yelling at you, you're doing the wrong thing.
Good. Thank you very much. Kai?
Yes. I did see there is a funding spread, it's good.
Okay. Future business, we have our next meeting, uh, May 13th, uh, it's the Bat School presentation, so that will be at the Bat School.
I know where that is.
Okay, okay. And, May 20th, we have the little school presentation at the little school. June 10th, we have a meeting, or we have, we have a meeting, we're gonna have a meeting at five o'clock before town meeting, which will be at 6:45. Only concern I have about that at all, to think about, is if we're gonna have any sort of finance planning meeting in advance of town meeting, too. I'm a little bit worried about that part, where you might have to.
Maybe much.
Yeah, so that meeting may have to get, I don't know. And then, June 10th, now, so May 13th does work as the Monday for the election, correct? We'll do reorganization on, on May 13th. If there's nothing else, I will kind of, I will. But sure.
I so.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. I don't like, I don't like hearing, I don't like saying, so. Passes four to one. Thank you, everybody.